I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome. Obviously, I am not Mayor Tomes. I'm filling in for him as Mayor Pro Tem. The mayor couldn't be here tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so. May we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Mayberry, absent. Alderman Sprigatus.
Present.
Alderman Talaner, absent. Alderman Ship.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Parker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, item number five.
Minutes of the January 28, 2019 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Alrighty. Do we have any discussion on it? Apologies, sorry, first time. No? Alrighty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of January 28, 2019.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Alrighty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Update, Rock Island. Item number seven. First item is the Blackhawk State Park Valentine's Day event. Head out to Watchtower Lodge at Blackhawk State Historic Site on Thursday, February 14, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for the Valentine Indoor Music and Moonlight Walk. You can go for a stroll on a luminary-lit trail or just go into the lodge and keep warm by the fire while enjoying fresh donuts and cider or hot cocoa. There will be music provided by Just For Fun. This is fun for singles, couples, and families. The event is free. For more information, call 309-788-9536. Second item is the 2019 Outdoor Show. The Outdoor Show will be coming to the Quad City Expo Center, February 14 through February 17, 2019. Hours are Thursday, 4 p.m. to 8 p.m. Friday, noon to 8 p.m. Saturday, 9 a.m. to 8 p.m. And Sunday, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Adults are $8. Kids between the ages of 6 and 15 are $1, and kids under 6 are free. Advanced tickets are available online at www.qccexpocenter.com. And the final item is the Community Crime Prevention Partnership Meeting. On Wednesday, February 20, 2019, the Police Department will continue their monthly informational meetings intended to strengthen existing partnerships with the citizens of Rock Island. This month's topic will cover police services. The meeting will take place at the Police Department Community Room at 1212 Fifth Avenue from 6 p.m. to 7 p.m. Item number eight.
A special ordinance providing for the sale of city-owned real estate at 1217 Ninth Avenue. Note, the ordinance presented at the January 28, 2019 council meeting contained a Scrivener's error of the commonly-known address.
A motion to pass the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion passed.
Item number nine.
A special ordinance providing for the sale of city-owned real estate at 1014 Sixth Avenue. Note, the ordinance presented at the January 28, 2019 council meeting contained a Scrivener's error of the commonly-known address.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second. Can I do that?
Uh huh.
Alright, cool. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
Just note for the record that they were, I think, one said avenue and street, and there was another numerical error. We will strive to improve on that. I don't think we've had any of those recently, and we'll try to avoid that happening again.
Thank you. Item number 10, please.
A special ordinance declaring 748-gallon refuse containers as surplus and allowing for disposal.
Motion to cons... Oops, sorry.
I was just gonna say, we can only consider the ordinance because...
Don't suspend the rules.
Oh, okay. Motion to consider the rules. Consider the ordinance.
Consider and pass the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion to consider and pass the ordinance and a second.
No, just consider the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, we can't pass it, that's right. Thanks for the clarification. There's a motion to consider and a second. Any discussion?
Look forward to having the discussion when all the council's here.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be riveting.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion passed.
Oh, man, next meeting is gonna be busy. We're gonna just double all of this. Alright, item number 11, please.
A special ordinance removing a one-way street for eastbound traffic on 25th Avenue between 9th and 11th Streets on school days between the hours of 7:15 a.m. and 8:15 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. and 3:30 p.m.
Move to consider the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can't wait for the discussion in two weeks when the rest of the council's here.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 726 24th Street.
Move to consider the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 13.
A special ordinance establishing one four-hour parking space in front of 1625 Second Avenue.
Move to consider the ordinance.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 14.
A resolution urging the Rock Island County Board and/or the Rock Island Public Building Commission to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for the successful privatization and redevelopment of the historic Rock Island County Courthouse. The motion should be whether or not to adopt the resolution.
I'd move to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second.
Oh, no, sorry, just move to adopt the resolution, period.
And we have a second. I'd like to first start out, I'm just going to read the proposed resolution for the public and for those at home. It's Resolution Number 01-2019. Whereas the Rock Island City Council is a representative form of government expected to execute the direction of its citizens, and whereas the annual budget of the City of Rock Island for the past two years has included increased taxes and fees over a variety of sources in order to sufficiently fund the expected functions of government, and whereas in order to maintain or lower the tax burden for the citizens and guests of Rock Island, every responsible effort to expand the local tax base should be pursued as far as possible by the City of Rock Island, and whereas in older communities where natural resources and geographic space are limited, one successful method by which local tax bases are expanded is by the preservation and redevelopment of historic properties, and whereas the City of Rock Island has historically led the Quad Cities in recognizing the economic development potential of historic preservation and reuse by being the first municipality in 1984 to pass a historic preservation ordinance, and whereas through the Preservation Ordinance and Commission, 169 Rock Island properties have been listed as either locally landmarked or on the National Register of Historic Places, and whereas Rock Island has historically led the Quad Cities in urban renewal through the demonstrated success of historic neighborhood revitalization efforts in Broadway, Keystone, the Hallberg Civic Center, and Douglas Park, and whereas Rock Island, as recently as last year, continues to demonstrate successful downtown historic redevelopment through development agreements with private developers such as Saratoga Capital for the current best-building redevelopment project, and whereas in 2018, Rock Island hired a firm to execute the city council's goal of adding the downtown district to the National Register of Historic Places, and whereas the historic Rock Island County Courthouse provides an opportunity to continue Rock Island's success in redeveloping historic properties to increase the tax base and alleviate local tax burdens, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rock Island City Council formally invites the Rock Island County Board and/or the Rock Island County Public Building Commission to discuss and draft an intergovernmental agreement between our public bodies for the successful privatization and redevelopment of the historic Rock Island County Courthouse. Now, I'm going to give members from the public, if there's any interest, the opportunity to speak, but before that, any aldermen want to say anything about this resolution?
I just want to say to the Mayor Pro Tem, Parker, you did a very nice job putting this ordinance or this, excuse me, this resolution together. Very well-written. And I think it strikes that tone that we're trying to put out there, that it's not confrontational, adversarial. City of Rock Island being where the seat of the county, we believe we're a vital stakeholder in this discussion. This has obviously evolved into a much larger public conversation. You could call it a debate, but it certainly has been causing a lot of conversation among citizens in this city and the other cities within the county and throughout the state of Illinois and really across the country. People are watching this. I think about the cities in Europe where historic preservation isn't even a thing that's talked about. It's just a way of life. People preserve the buildings, the culture, and that builds on top of itself for more and more development and opportunity. Much has been said in this chamber. I think of the conversation that we had, I think, two years ago regarding the Hallberg Civic Center, and when that started, when there was interest in, you know, a legitimate offer to convert the use of that to a different function, it sparked a really positive community conversation that resulted in a very positive community result. And lastly, I'll say that this resolution reminds me of a previous resolution that we passed at this council calling for the legalization of industrial hemp, recreational marijuana. Both of these being authored and signed by the Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to point that out. That's where the bold happens here at this council.
Mayor Pro Tem. That's fun stuff. Thank you. Wise words, Alderman Ship. I would like to just make a few quick comments. I believe everyone on this council has received concerns from the public about whether the City of Rock Island is going to be, you know, taking on the financial responsibilities of essentially any potential redevelopment of the courthouse. I think it's safe to say, at least from my position, but I believe I share it with those that will join me in voting in the affirmative on this, but it is the intention of the city to simply offer the staff, the partnerships that we have in the community, organizations like Development Association of Rock Island or other, whoever else is out there that the city regularly works with, to facilitate something like this. This is not the city saying, "Ah, we'll fork up $20 million to redevelop this thing." That is not our intention at all. We are ambitious in believing that if a redevelopment agreement can be had, it will be done through private dollars, but we have the experience here in the city to make these types of deals happen. And so, I just wanted to assure any public concern that this was going to be a windfall from the city coffers. That is not the intention here. That's not what we're going for. We simply have the internal capacity to facilitate this conversation with the building's owners and potential developers. So, that's what we're hoping to invite the county into. Ultimately, it's the county's decision, but this is the city saying, "We're willing to help if you would like it." With that said, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Come on down. Okay. Before you speak, is there a sheet of paper on the podium right there?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind writing down your name and probably a city that you reside in, right?
There's only one city, sir, Rock Island.
Right on.
Sir, I just want to read a quick statement, and members of the Rock Island County Tax Reduction Coalition are encouraged by your remarks that the intent is not to have the city pay for the redevelopment of the courthouse. We really appreciate that. However, we feel that a potential investor may ask for millions of dollars in taxpayer funds to make the required renovations to the old courthouse. We need tax-generating properties. However, we feel that taxpayers should not have to subsidize private industry. The potential investors in this property should bear the total cost of renovation, reap the profits, pay their fair share of taxes, and not expect a taxpayer handout for this private venture. We ask that the city council not burden the taxpayers of Rock Island and Rock Island County. As you develop the specifics of this effort with members of the Rock Island County Board, please consider the taxpayers. And that's all we ask for, sir. Please keep us taxpayers in mind as you develop the specifics of this effort. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate your response.
Yeah, I mean, that's... Our intention here is to hopefully increase the tax base so that we don't have to keep relying on property taxpayers. So, absolutely, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you very much. Alrighty. There has been a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Geenan.
Abstain.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
And to clarify, this will be coming up for a second reading at the next council meeting.
Nope.
No, no.
No?
You can pass with a simple majority of a quorum on a resolution.
Oh, so all the worry about... Okay.
Right.
So that passed.
Yes, that is correct.
Mission accomplished. Mission accomplished. Thank you for the clarification. That was a lot easier than I thought it was. Okay, item number 15, please.
Claims, I'll read A through E, those we can vote on. A.
Thank you.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $12,408.41 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois for legal services rendered from December 17, 2018 through January 31, 2019. B, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $45,527.84 to Harris Computer System of Chicago, Illinois for the annual maintenance contract for the North Star System Utility Billing Software for the year from April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2020. C, report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $59,439.56 to Harris Computer System of Chicago, Illinois for the annual maintenance contract for JEMs FMS, HRMS, Financial and Human Resources software for the year from April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2020. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $51,225.62 to Think Management of Plant City, Florida for settlement claim. And E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $74,078.39 to Compass Minerals of Atlanta, Georgia for the purchase of rock salt.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims A through E.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Do we have to make a motion to table some of these ones that we don't have the quorum to vote on?
Please, we should probably postpone them to a date certain night.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to postpone claims F through G?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
To the next council meeting date.
Is A?
You made the motion, and you made the second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I guess I'd just like to have an explanation of why we're postponing them.
I have to recuse myself from voting on F and G due to my employment. Therefore, I don't think we have enough people here tonight to pass.
Yeah, there's a distinction for the resolution because it's not specifically allocating funds. You can just do a simple majority of a quorum, which would be three out of four. However, when we're talking about approval of specific dollar amounts and just committing dollar amounts, you need to have a majority of a quorum. And if we have one abstention, we would not have the four votes necessary.
I accept that.
So this will delay the payments by a month?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Is that a roll call vote to...
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 16.
Claims for the weeks of January 25 through January 31 in the amount of $1,181,288.75, and for February 1 through February 7 in the amount of $365,779.77, and payroll for the weeks of January 14 through January 27 in the amount of $1,522,689.20.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 17.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the purchase of cut-in water valves from Corin Maine LP of Washington, Illinois in the amount of $25,726.80.
Move to approve the purchases recommended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Number 18.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the purchase of fire hydrants from Ferguson Waterworks of DeKalb, Illinois in the amount of $40,615.72.
Move to approve the purchases recommended.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 19.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of realtime leak-correlation equipment, recommending the bid be awarded to Guderman Incorporated of New Market, New Hampshire in the amount of $25,550.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the purchase.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
We're gonna need another motion to postpone item number 20.
Yes.
I can't vote on that one as well.
I'll make that motion to the next council meeting date for item 20.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 21.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding bids for the purchase of a John Deere sprayer for Highland Springs, recommending the bid be awarded to Van Wall of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $45,300.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 22.
We need to postpone that one as well.
Oh, was that for the early one? Okay.
Motion to postpone 22 till the next meeting.
Second.
And the reason for that continuance is with a budget adjustment, you have to have at least five out of the seven total council members present. We don't have enough council members present to consider that.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Sprigatus.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays, motion carried.
We're on item twenty-three now, correct?
Yes. Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency contractor rotation list, recommending the addition of Crawford Company of Rock Island, Illinois to the list.
Move to approve the addition as recommended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Alderman Parker recommending the installation of two passenger loading zones, one on the east side of Eighteenth Street north of Second Avenue and the other on the east side of Nineteenth Street north of Second Avenue.
Move to approve the installation of two passenger loading zones as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Um, I would just like to say, so, the, for those at home and in the audience, um, this is something that I've been hoping to get done for a while now. Basically, what we're gonna be doing is installing, replacing two parking spots in downtown near the pedestrian mall on Second Avenue with ride-share pickup drop-off spots, uh, basically. Um, we wanna be a city that encourages the use of these services as opposed to driving drunk, um, so I thought that this was a, a good idea. Um, obviously, it's, takes up parking spaces, but I think that overall, this helps position Rock Island as a forward-thinking community that welcomes, um, the modes that future generations are gonna wanna travel with. I don't think any other community in the Quad Cities has these, I may be wrong with that, but, um, I appreciate Public Works and the Traffic Engineering Committee, um, thoroughly assessing this and looking forward to the vote.
Can I make a clarification? Just so the public is aware, these two spaces are only designated as passenger loading zones on a daily basis from 5:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. Is one of the details. Uh, also, uh, any person picking up friends can pull into the passenger loading zone to pick them up. Doesn't just, it's not just for Uber or cab drivers. Um, and in the daytime, the spaces would comply with the current parking regulations. That's all.
Alrighty, roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number twenty-five.
Report, report from the mayor regarding appointments to the Martin Luther King Junior Board.
Motion to approve the appointments as recommended.
Second.
Do I still have to, uh, motion and a second? Any discussion? Do I still have to read the names if, uh?
The mayor pro tem?
A certain alderman's not here?
Oh, no, he's not here.
He might be watching from home.
That's true.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, so the appointees are Caleb Babbers, Babers, sorry, Heidi Hosenkamp Collins, Michael Glanz, and Zenaida Landeros. For the Martin Luther King Board. Roll call. No, nope, no roll call for that one. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty-six.
Report from the mayor regarding appointments to the Police Pension Board of Trustees and to the Metropolitan Airport Authority.
Uh, I will be abstaining from this vote due to the nature of my employment regarding the Metropolitan Airport Authority appointment.
So three, three affirmative votes is sufficient?
We're not, uh, in this situation, we can still, yes, the same is with the resolution.
Ain't no money involved.
Right.
So I'll make the motion to approve the appointments of the Police Pension Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
Alrighty, so, are we gonna do a second motion after this?
Yes.
For the Airport Authority?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Aaron Curry to the Police Pension Board of Trustees?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
I make the motion to appoint, uh, the Metropolitan Authority, uh, recommendations.
Second. Uh, it's Richard John Junior is the appointee. And so, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And Ship abstained. Motion passes. Item number twenty-seven.
Report from the city clerk regarding Plaza activity event applications from the Dai Dai factory for the 2019 Plaza season, including the outdoor sale and consumption of alcohol where noted.
Move to approve the events and requests as recommended, subject to complying with all Plaza and liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Alright, item twenty-eight, other business slash public comment.[1634.65]